Good evening, and call this meeting to order on 7:01. Stand and please leave the line, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands firmamentation under God, indivisible, and liberity just for all.
Okay, this is the reorganization meeting for the R.I.B. Joint Planning and Zoning Board. Public notice has been advertised according to law posted in the legal newspaper of the Borough of R.I.B. that retrospect and by posting the same on the bulletin board of municipal building. The first order of business will be the swearing-in of new appointments and benefits to the zoning and planning board, including reappointments. Mr. Fulton is excused late June, he is ill, so he will be sworn in at the February meeting. At this time let me have Mr. Rowan swear, Mr. Renieri, Mr. Vanella, Mr. Lopenstein, and Mr. Daley.
Gentlemen, if you don't stand. I'm going to give you the oath of office and you'll repeat it from me when you say aye and then your name and, as I said, just repeat it from me. Aye?
Aye.
You can, you can. I believe in it either way. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution and laws of the State of New Jersey and that I will perform my duties as a member of the Planning and Zoning Board to the best of my ability to help me guide. Okay, welcome.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
Actually, I guess you could be seen as...
Mr. Rowan, I just want to put on record, just for the record, that Mr. Vanella is going to be voted at number one and Mr. Lopenstein will vote at number two. So when we see when they're... You guys sit up here and obey this.
Typically, yeah, the ordinance will set up the table with the...
There.
We'll just grab another...
Do you need extra chairs? We have chairs.
Just for the record, Madam Chairman, Nick is a Class 1 member of the board since he is a mayor. Mr. John is a Class 4 since he's a councilman and Paul is going to be a Class 2 since he is an employee of the Borough of R.I.B.
What does a Class 2 constitute?
Class 2, Paul, is either has to be an employee or a member of or have another appointment in the Borough of R.I.B.
Okay, now give him your right to vote.
You don't have... Yes, that gives you a right to vote. You don't have to be a resident of the Borough. As an employee, you are a Class 2 member or required to have at least one Class 2 member.
Thank you very much, John.
But you will vote on all matters. The only exclusions, as Nick knows and John and Troy become familiar with, is that you... John and Nick cannot vote on D-variances. That would be U-variances, which are, if they're not approved here, can go to town council, so they would... They may hear them on an alternate basis. But you'll be able to vote on any matter that would come before us. Also, for the ordinance, Craig and Dave, if you should...
Dennis.
I'm sorry, Dennis. If you should take the place of Nick or John, you would likewise have the same limitations. If they can't vote on a D-variant, you would not be able to vote on a E-variant. Okay? If you were to replace, say, Dick, he doesn't have that limitation or Debbie or any of the other Scott or anybody else, then you'd be able to vote on either one. Okay? So typically, when we do a panel and ordinance, we make that known at the one side of the application.
So you're replacing that person and something?
Yep. So when we replace, you would require, you have the same limitations or the same time.
Thank you. Jimmy, we have roll call, please.
Sure. Cleghammer?
Here.
Dickinson?
Here.
Bushian?
Yes.
Chowski?
Here.
Paul Ferling?
Here.
Daley?
Here.
Capadas?
Here.
Renieri?
Here.
Vanella?
Here.
Lopenstein?
Here.
Rowan?
Here.
And Pettit?
Here.
Thank you, Jimmy. The first motion is approval of the December minutes. Do I have any questions in this December? Is there a motion on the fourth of June?
Motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Awkley, seconded by Mr. Dickinson, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next matter of business before us would be nominations for 2015. We'll open up nominations for chairperson.
I'm going to get Cleghammer.
Second.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Roll call, Jim.
Motion to close nominations. Motion to approve closed nominations.
Second.
Second.
Can I say question to Potters? Roll call.
Cleghammer?
Abstain, please.
Dickinson?
Candy Cleghammer.
Bushian? No, Candy, yes. Kachowski?
Candy Cleghammer.
Paul Ferling?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Capadas?
Yes.
Renieri?
Yes.
Vanella?
Yes.
Lopenstein?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for your confidence. Thank you very much. Second order of business would be nominations for vice-chairperson. I'd like to enter in the name of Mr. Richard Dickinson.
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations for vice-chairperson?
I'm making motion to close the nominations for vice-chair.
I'll second that. Roll call, Jim.
Cleghammer?
Mr. Dickinson.
Dickinson?
Abstain.
Bushian? Mr. Dickinson. Kachowski?
Jefferson.
Paul Ferling?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Capadas?
Yes.
Renieri?
Yes.
Vanella?
Yes.
Lopenstein. Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everyone. Look forward to a good year.
Okay, the next order of business is the appointment of our secretary for the year 2015 under the name of June Elkins.
Second.
Are there any other names?
I'm moving closed nominations.
Okay.
Second.
Motion to made, second to closed nominations. Roll call, Jim, please.
Cleghammer?
June Elkins?
Dickinson?
June Elkins.
Bushian?
Yes.
Kachowski?
June Elkins.
Paul Ferling?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Capadas?
Yes.
Renieri?
Yes.
Vanella?
Yes.
Lopenstein?
Yes.
And thank you, thank you, June, for your service. We appreciate it very much. You do a great job for us. Proposals were accepted on December 29th of 2014. There was one proposal received for product engineer and one proposal for solicitor. Copies of all proposals were made available to all board members to review. Are there any questions? We want to add their Mr. Rowan's proposal or Mr. Pettit's proposal. Okay, with that, I'd like to make the nomination to appoint Mr. David Rowan as our solicitor. Other than any other, if nothing else on the agenda as far as any other proposals, so we'll just do a roll call.
And I think we do it as an ordinance, David, part of your, in the event that I'm not able to.
That's fine, yep.
You had that on your...
Yes.
Yeah, we had a instance where they didn't want to nominate, they didn't want to appoint your firm.
Right.
They wanted to appoint...
An individual.
An individual. That's why I said, so we will do Mr. Partimer as a wonderful second amendment. Okay, Jimmy? Yeah, roll call. Mr. Rowan?
Dickinson?
Mr. Rowan.
Bushian?
Yes.
Kachowski?
Yes.
Paul Ferling?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Capadas?
Yes.
Renieri?
Yes.
Vanella?
Yes.
Lopenstein?
Yes.
Thank you very much. It's been a great board to work with. I'm sure the new members are going to appreciate the board and the fine work they did last year and I look forward to having a good year with you, 2015.
Couldn't do without you, thank you.
We got a lot of good stuff done last year.
Yeah, we did. We couldn't do without you, thank you for your help and I appreciate you always taking my phone calls during the week, trying to get everything, get everything right. I know it's in the middle of your day sometimes, but I gotta get you when I can.
It gives me a reason to reach for the scotch bottle, so.
Okay, the next matter of business is appointment of our engineers. I'll enter the name of John Pettit.
Second.
Okay. Motion to made and seconded for Mr. Pettit. Roll call, Jim.
Cleghammer?
Mr. Pettit.
Dickinson?
John Pettit.
Bushian?
Yes.
Chowski?
Yes.
Paul Ferling?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Capadas?
Yes.
Renieri?
Yes.
Vanella?
Yes.
Lopenstein?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. I don't have any Brian Hall. Welcome back, gentlemen. Brian Hall has an ordinance, has a second amendment. Okay. Do we have one resolution this evening, Mr. Rowan?
Yeah, there's one more resolution. When we may want to entertain, we traditionally always vote on, is the who our official newspapers are and a calendar of our proposed meetings, which is always a Schedule A. And just to approve that the Courier-Post, the Journal, Record Reads and the Inquirer will be our official newspapers for publication for applications coming for us.
Is the Record Reads still on?
Ah, jeez, I don't know, is it?
I haven't seen it.
Well, if they come, we can cross their name out or if then come back. We should cross that name out in the resolution I already provided, Jimmy.
Excuse me. Don't we, doesn't this town receive the Wall Street City News?
No.
I thought we used to receive the Wall Street News.
We're starting to get it, but it has to meet the threshold of circulation and things like that, excessive, I mean, we could, you know, assign with the Courier-Post. The council uses Retrospect and Courier-Post. I think we didn't want to concurrent with council.
Yeah, we don't want to use Record Reads and all that, please. Some reason I thought they didn't exist, but in real...
We use that here, that local paper, the Retrospect.
The two papers that council uses.
And the Inquirer, I mean, the Inquirer, as long as we have to...
We don't post in the Inquirer. I would say Journal Reads and the Retrospect.
And we'll do a resolution and we'll approve the following newspapers, the Courier-Post and the Retrospect and you can just change that in the resolution.
That's for the Resolution 15-004.
Yes.
That's where we want to advertise our regular meeting dates and the official newspaper in conformity with the Public Meeting Act. David, you want to go down these resolutions individually, 01 through 07, do you want to read them or you just want to do a roll?
No, just a roll. They've already been submitted to June. The only thing we have to change are the two newspapers and we did insert Craig and Dennis's name as the ordinance on the, that would be the latest resolution.
Okay, and we already stated that Dennis is the first officer and Craig is the second, so will you insert that, please do that. Okay, is there any other questions on Resolutions 15-001 through 15-007?
I have a copy of it, I agree.
Is it on your...
I don't have any, I'm going to...
Do you have an agenda?
I have an agenda.
So you can't carry email?
I don't have an agenda.
John, the only names that won't be in the resolutions will be for the first ordinance member and the second order. That's a poll.
Okay, any other questions?
I'm starting off all with this.
I'm starting off all with this? Oh, it's just the dates and everything.
I read everything.
I have a motion by Mr. Capadas and a second by...
Yeah, motion for 15-01 through 15-07.
And a second by Mr. Dickinson to approve Resolutions 15-001 through 15-007 as printed. Roll call, please, Jim.
Cleghammer?
Yes.
Dickinson?
Yes.
Bushian?
Yes.
Kachowski?
Yes.
Paul Ferling?
Yes.
Capadas?
Yes.
Renieri?
Yes.
Lopenstein?
Yes.
And Vanella?
Yes.
Thank you. Order of business, we have one motion.
I need you out, Daley?
Yeah. Now I'll have a vote. Yes, I'll vote, yes. I don't want to read any questions. I don't get the vote, no.
Yes, I'm with that.
I'm going to click a button. We'll give a plan. Took two hours.
Mr. Rowan, do you have a...
Yes, we have one resolution to memorialize tonight. It's the applicant Deborah Brown, premises at 800 West Third Avenue in R1 District. She was seeking a bulk variance rear yard. Ms. Brown is the, is the resident, had the rear deck that she was replacing and we're permitting her to come within, I believe, what was it, 12 feet where 15 feet was, 20, no, within 15 feet where 25 feet was required. So you're just...
Yes, and I have a copy of the zoning permit that Mr. Knight issued to Mrs. Brown on December 10th. If that continues to work with that, we have a motion to adopt the resolutions, right?
Sure.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dickinson, second by Mrs. Bushian. All in favor?
Aye.
Any of those, any motion to adopt the resolution has been accepted.
Jimmy, you have, you've got a copy.
Well, you know what, I should have done a roll call now, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the only members, I guess, are the new members that will abstain because they didn't hear that application.
And I wasn't here for that.
So, I'm sorry, I should have done a roll call for that resolution to memorialize. Roll call, please.
Cleghammer?
Yes.
Dickinson?
Yes.
Bushian?
Yes.
Kachowski?
Yes.
Paul Ferling?
Yes.
Abstaining, Mr. Daley?
Abstain. Okay.
Capadas?
Abstain.
Renieri?
Abstain.
Lopenstein?
Abstain.
And Vanella?
Abstain. All right, thank you very much. Yep, very little stuff. I guess I'm going to kind of put this in under old business because we have been discussing this for a few months. It's the matter of retaining wall for Mr. Masiotti's property, Mr. Stolinski. John Pettit has put forth a request for funds to complete his end of project in amount of $625. Mr. Knight, I don't know if you had any conversation with the gentleman that has the property with the retaining wall in regards to this money?
No.
Okay. It's our, it is our position that we should compel him to pay that money. I don't think it should be on anyone but the property owner. I don't know whether it's something where you want to speak to him about that, whether you want to start, you want to get escrow, whether escrow together, like that Mr. Judge Fabbash tell him to do it.
Does he even cite you, Mickey?
No, because this is a matter that I prefer fact... So he's not a violation at this point? No, he's not a violation because of the fact that the age of the matter was from 1984.
He didn't build the, what he was supposed to build, the Gordon-up plan?
That was a contention.
Okay.
That he didn't come into compliance with the directives from 1984.
Or he might have been, they've now deteriorated, you know, they would never know. So he would never, okay.
What I suggested was to have Mr. Pettit firm review the situation as it exists today. I requested Mr. Pettit to give a proposal to the council because the council controls the budget and that's where this came on the $625. You know, the planning board does have a budget, it's a nominal amount of, you know, maybe above and beyond the normal day-to-day business. The chairperson feels that we should try to compel the, the month president violation first to pay this before it's proven to the taxpayer.
John, there is a plan that, that he, can we identify that he did not construct whatever of those improvements according to a plan that was submitted or is that, is that the...
We can't find the plan, is that correct? I believe Brian from my office was able to find a plan in the Borough's office.
Great.
Okay.
No?
Not mine.
I thought he was able to find something, but I'll, I'll verify that.
If there is a plan, Mayor, I think, and based on John's, so John doesn't, I know his investigation's not completed yet, I don't believe, but if based on initial review of John, if the resident didn't complete those improvements according to the plan that's on file, then I think Keith can cite him for non-compliance. I think at that time, then we could request our local, or Keith could request the local court to mandate escrow, may him to...
But would we need Mr. Pettit to go out there to inspect it first and what would be the opposing, Mr. Pettit?
I think he could just give a letter that he's not compliant.
John?
And then if he had to do additional work to say what has to be done, I think it would be on the resident. I don't know why the Borough...
I think it's a very nominal thing, I think it's more than fair.
The $625 would be to give the board a report that says what's out there today is in compliance with what was on the plans or not, or has deteriorated to a point that feels that it's a dangerous situation and needs to be corrected.
All right, so what are...
Wouldn't be anything further than, wouldn't be sort of doing a remedial action plan or anything like that, wouldn't inspect anything further. You know, and at that point, if anything further would need to be done, I think the construction department would need to be applied for, you know, the construction office that would need to be reviewed.
I mean, we can't force the resident to put up the money for John, but possibly our judge could make that a condition of compliance, that he has to pick the township, like our township engineer, Joe.
Well, what's his holdup on getting it done or not getting it done, Keith, do you know? Well, for me to issue, I would have to issue a notice of violation. The money issue aside, once Mr. Pettit completed his report, then I could issue a notice of violation. Now, if he didn't come into compliance with it, then it would wind up here in municipal court, which they are required to be directed. As far as reimbursement to the Borough, I don't know.
See, the problem I would see is that everybody, if there, if we have people that are not compliant, are we spending money to send John out to prove they're not compliant and our Borough's spending money that we're not going to be getting back?
Yeah, we can't do that. We can't, we're not, we're not... The only other thing about this case in particular is the fact that we had something that was completed and maybe not inspected properly at the time it was completed. That's the only reason we're going back out there. The only way for John to ascertain if it was done properly or not, with, I mean, like I said, I don't want to just spend taxpayers' money to do this, but for us to have a little closure on this, I don't see how we can even cite the gentleman, correct, without having John's bureau office opinion saying that it's in by, it wasn't constructed to the right time.
Mr. Hurry original supporting documentation, or hurry to agree. Yeah, that's what, I think John said Brian might have found something. Mr. Stolinski?
Mr. Hall, you mean? Which is... Yes.
Okay.
From, as I was saying, this initiated 1984...
That gives me our teeth, right? Yeah, if we have that, then, yeah, absolutely.
So we have it.
I provided a print that was sent to me by Mr. Beatrice from the planning board at the time. It was never followed through by Mr. Contrera and it was supposed to go to court and at the time I was a working mayor and my wife couldn't get involved in everything that was going on. The wall never went up to completion. It only went so far and stopped and nobody did anything about it. I mean, I called the mayor and I called everybody that I could. Mr. Dickinson, you know that's a fact, okay? Mr. Beatrice is the one that provided the drawing and said this is what we want to have.
So we have the drawing now? Who has the drawing?
I did provide it to Keith.
Yes, is it a drawing, a plan, Keith, or is it, there was quite a few documents he...
So my contention is that we have a drawing from 1984 of what was supposed to be done. I appreciate you offering to go out there, but why do we need Mr. Pettit to go out there to inspect it? I think Mr. Knight is duly qualified to go out there and say, with this document in hand, that this wall, either number one was never done, number two, it was done, deteriorated to the point where it needs to be redone and therefore you're in violation.
I would kind of agree.
And that way, we're not compelling the gentleman to spend $625. We have a document supporting what's supposed to be there. Mr. Keith is more than capable of asserting that it is or is not in compliance and then citing the gentleman, you know, as the board member.
Chairman, I agree. Can you look at that plan and make the determination?
Well, what happened was I went out there all with Mr. Mettler, the construction official. Yes, we both went out there and looked at the property and as we discussed at the time, yes, there was some deterioration, but again, we were looking at the issue of enforcing something that was three decades old and that's why we referred it back to the board and began the analysis from Mr. Pettit, how the property from an engineering standpoint hasn't existed today.
You've been there longer?
No, Brian's already spent time on it. So... I think this is a unique case where, you know, most violations doesn't require input from, you know, outside firm. I issue those violations based on the property maintenance.
And John, we can certainly reimburse you for, if you have Brian's, we don't, you know, I'm looking to have you have Brian work, afraid I'll need that. If Brian has some time to ball, I mean, if that's, we, I personally asked you a year or two ago...
That's where the $625 came from. It was the five hours of Brian's fiddleings.
Okay, so he has five hours of us. Okay.
Yeah, I personally, I don't want to put John on the, you know, understand the chairman's point of view. Yeah, I mean, I think we're a little bit unasked this because...
If that ship already sailed, I don't want to put you in the mirrors with the money.
Yeah, John has expenses, like even Borough somebody should, but then possibly when this gentleman's brought in before our judge, that should be made as a reimbursement. The court should be made aware of that, that this is what the Borough had to go to do.
Right. Either way, John has to pay and the Borough needs to be reimbursed, in my opinion.
I...
What I would suggest to you is allow him to complete report and if I get a copy and based on it as a violation, own his report and contact the, either Mr. Rowan or the Borough's solicitor to send a formal bill to Mr. Masiotti.
Yes.
Say that it's due and full due to the fact that it was never completed, compliant compliance in the original record. Excuse me.
Um, could it else, part of, I mean, it's a question. In nineteen eighty-four, when this was not completed, or was completed, was partially completed, or whatever, how is, how, how is this gentleman's problem going to be corrected? Is the other party involved going to be ordered to complete the complete task by a certain date?
That's what Mr. Keith.
Yeah, so, 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 correct me if I'm wrong. So, he will have to complete a proper retaining wall we're talking about by a certain date. And if he does not, Mr. Knight would then cite him, is that correct?
It, it, it's going to get more involved than that. I, my understanding was this was part of some kind of a site plan approval? This retaining wall?
Actually.
Is that your understanding?
One, one side.
Yes, I think. So there was some kind of a site plan approval by this board?
And that, that's why, sort of back to the board, you know, obviously this was not the board.
I, I think it was remanded after the, or. The gentleman, he's not compliant, so, like, Keith, right, with our maintenance?
Well, yeah, there, there's some maintenance issues there, but, uh, as you indicated, we did not come in compliance with the nineteen eighty-four, as John mentioned, site plan approval, and that's why I referred back to the board.
But we have those plans, somebody got us the plans, uh.
There's a detail of a wall, that supposedly was part of a site plan approval. The wall that was built is not in accordance with that detail.
Okay.
It's not constructed in accordance with that detail. So it's never built in accordance with the approved plan.
And there's no statute of limitations on that? In other words, if he came in nineteen eighty-four and he was out of compliance then?
And, and I think the statute would begin when the fact that he's in non-compliance is discovered. Okay, typically that's when statutes will start to run, when, when the, the.
I think it's closing, closing issues to the state for the law.
Yeah, and so I think that that, it would start then, when, when, when the issue started.
But it's at a point now where you can't just go back and build the wall, because it's been filled in behind it. So you need somebody to go in and look at it as it exists today, now you're going to fix it. Rather than what it was before it was built.
He's got a new site plan here. So if Mr. Knight cites him for this, after your report, Mr. Knight cites him for not being in compliance, you come in front of the judge, and what do you say? Do we have the judge to bring it back in front of here, John? Is that what you're saying?
With the second? Well, you, you would only know in front of the judge if you failed to comply.
Based on what goes like that, by the law.
My inclination at the end of what I, at the end of the letter is going to be, that he would need to get an engineer to look at the situation, and come up with a remedial action plan to address the problem. How is he going to get this wall's correct?
And then, and then would you, for that same six twenty-five, would you then look at, I'm saying, you would look at that plan?
Not for that.
Okay.
I don't know that that should be the planning board engineer or the Borough.
Okay.
And I think from the beginning, Ryan said that this is, we thought this was a Borough issue.
Okay.
But either way, I mean, we can look at it, it, whoever takes.
We just, we just want to know, um, obviously, someone needs to look at it.
Right.
I mean, because, uh, it's not fair to the resident, make him tear down something and rebuild something, and then we say, oh, you're still in compliance.
No, 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 no. No, it should be reviewed and approved, and then inspected, to make sure it goes in the right way, so we're not in the same situation ten years from now.
So we need, we need to bring this gentleman into this board. I don't know if the full application wants to get to that point.
And I also think someone should review the records of whatever approvals were granted.
Would, would that, Ryan have to come and get a building permit to put the wall?
Well, I think that should, you were correct there, but I think that should come after the site plan approval.
So I think. That he submitted. I don't have the site plan in myself. We never found that paperwork.
I think it's a suggestion, once Mr. Pettit completes his report, and a letter should come right through the board, right to Mr. Masaiadi, indicating that you're taking over, or was not completed in nineteen eighty-four, and current inspection by the engineers, uh, indicating your deficiencies, and you'll need currently the site plan approved. And then, if you need such building permits, once you deem it approvable, as John mentioned, somebody should have to review.
Well, at that point in time, if he's coming in for site plan, he's going to have to do all necessary paperwork and, you know, put all necessary escrows in. For John and Mr. Royan to be reviews, as with any other site plan approval. So everything, I think, would follow the order, and then we would just compel him to get the additional six twenty-five.
I'd be ordering a copy. Would that be our court?
That's court.
Yeah.
So coenforcement in through the court.
Well, even, can you say that they would send him a letter, since they're the ones that engage the services to go out, the planning board?
No, see, the planning board is not an enforcement agency, we can't enforce it. We hear applications, we can't enforce the, it's the, it's the, then our court, or.
How about Len Wood?
Or again, or.
Len, Len Wood can do it from Mayor and Council, as the, as the, as a solicitor for Mayor and Council.
He's not in compliance and, uh.
I'm not trying to drag the guy into court, I'm not trying to make this difficult for anybody. I want to compel him to get this done in the nicest way possible.
But I think if he, if he doesn't do it, then the only other way to deal with it would be for Keith to cite him.
Oh, he's going to end up, if he doesn't do it, he's going to end up in front of Nick Trish, there's no doubt. But I'm just saying, I'm not trying to drag the guy through, you know, a, a bunch of, uh, you know, problems. I just want him to understand where we stand. Mr. Pettit's on a, you know, a report, here's the report, this is the cost of this report. Mr. Knight has examined your property, he's not in compliance, you're going to need to come in front of planning and zoning board with a site plan, you have to see Mrs. Pinto to get all the information, you know, for a site plan approval, and start the process.
I mean, I, start the process. Lane, yeah, if, once the thing that he's not, you know, Lane can send that letter.
How can you do that without the documentation?
Well, I think we need to approve Mr. Pettit to finish his report.
Yes, but you do.
Now, are we going to, or is the Borough going to, Nick?
Uh, I basically already gave, pretty much gave Mr. Pettit the go-ahead.
Okay.
This board had the final say, in my opinion, I would ask the board. The council has no power, and again, once again, this is a budgetary item, it doesn't necessarily need a vote, but this board needs to be aware that that's where the funds are coming out of.
But I think if this gentleman has to be in compliance, it should be made to reimburse the Borough for.
Yeah, we're not doing this.
For what John had to do, even in the court, or re, yeah, not reimburse John, but reimburse the, uh, running.
And hopefully, he won't be, have to go to court to be compelled to pay. I mean, hopefully, he just understands that this needs to be done, and he thinks that he gets a, a site plan done, he builds the wall, and, and that's that. I mean, but if that takes, you know.
There, there's a, a presently, a code violation based on what's there now.
Well, in the store, the store property maintenance, yes.
Okay, so aside from what happened in nineteen eighty-four, which, if, if we go at it from that perspective, without the documentation from nineteen eighty-four, I don't know whether or not that's going to have any teeth in it.
Well, he, 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 what's one, his random coming onto yours, that's a nuisance, that's a.
So he, he's already in viol, he's, he's already involved in a code violation, is, would it be better just to go at it from that perspective?
If you can go after it that way, Deborah, or this gentleman to file a complaint in municipal court for, uh, uh, under nuisance, like this would reverse?
What, what do you think would be the best?
I think that, you know, apparently this gentleman, the neighbor hasn't been contacted yet by anybody.
Not by Alice.
All right. Or by Lynn?
Oh, yes, uh, uh, Mr. Knight.
I would, I would maybe start with maybe the board having Lynn as the Borough, uh, solicitor, sending the letter that it's.
Well, we get the report from John, we can then say it's a nuisance, and then move it to that next step.
And then, based on the report of the engineer, he is not in compliance, he has to be bringing into compliance within, contact the planning and zoning board, get an application. If he doesn't, then you cite him.
Then the Borough has no records of these site plans.
But we, we do have certain, certain.
All the copies were intermediately by Mr. Siloski.
The, the plan and the drawing that I was given came from Mr. Beatrice in the planning board at the time it all transpired, because Mr. Contrera, who was supposed to be the official, didn't enforce any of them.
So you have, you have documents from a.
I provided everything.
Okay, so what is that? Mr. Knight.
So, we could do it either way, but I'm just saying, if you don't have official documentation from me, if we're saying that this is what the board, uh, approved, and that he needed to comply with that approval, then it's going to be bouncing around until, if he's already in violation, if it is a code violation, you could go at it from that perspective, rather than getting involved in something that happened thirty years ago that you may or may not have documentation on. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I'd like to see the documentation that Keith has, he says he has it favorably.
It's fine.
They were providing.
It's fine, this is the, this, just do that.
We're starting the ball rolling, I mean, maybe Lane can send a letter, and then if there's, you know.
Well, you'll look at it, and you'll contact.
Yeah, and I, I think absolutely that if, if, if it's infringing on this gentleman's property, it's a nuisance, and in a.
Could be a huge issue.
Yes, sir, but I think at the end, we really need to use the bottom of this off.
Yeah, the.
Thirty years is a little long, I think.
Yeah, that's true.
So the Borough will issue a purchase order with John, and we'll take care of that, and then we'll do our best to.
And, and I believe Mr. Wood has a copy of all the documentation.
Get me a copy, and then maybe Lane can take John's letter or report and send it to this neighbor or resident?
Just keep, just keep me in the loop if you wouldn't mind, uh, with the direction we're going in, and anything.
It's apparently he has a, you've talked with him, there's nothing been done officially.
No, because, again, and, as you mentioned, that is, in fact, yes, I could cite him for code enforcement issues. But I wanted to make sure that all basics were covered effectively, where I didn't cite him with code violations, and then the issue of eighty-four came back, and we cited for retaining wall or debris. But part of the original nineteen eighty-four site plan was this, and it wasn't addressed, and if we were going to address these issues with Mr. Masaiadi, all were addressed at the time. It is uniform, right, so, and it goes from A to Z, and everything was completed. And then from there on, if there's any deterioration on the property, then I would handle it under code enforcement.
First big step is on John's part, finish his report, that's the first big step.
And you have access to that, that documentation, Keith, you have it, right?
That Mr. Siloski provided, yes.
Okay, so the first word business is getting that to.
Oh, yes.
A, as soon as possible, and then, because I know you've been here a few times already, we want to make sure we get the board.
On the board.
I think that, congratulations to all the new board members, happy new year.
Happy new year, sir.
Thank you for all your help, and I hope you get it covered.
We'll get it going, wait, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any more of old business?
Did we just send that to the old business, or?
Absolutely, because it's got heavy color on it and everything. Um, if, you didn't get one already, it's just our new tax map.
Sorry.
Zoning map, I'm sorry, it's our new zoning map, so, um, it's probably something good to have with you at, at the meetings. Um, when things come up, there's questions of what's R one, what's R two, what, what does this, you know, this is dual purpose zone, it's always nice to have this, and funny, because this has changed, um, a number of times, I believe, since fifteen years I've been on the board, and it's, and I think it's changed a number of times, so, it's good to have this with you to, to refer to. I really have, uh, nothing, nothing to report, other than, uh, I sure would like to, uh, do whatever we can this year to encourage business in town. You know, we have a whole lot of empty inventory out there. Dennis, you have to get some business people to come in and fill those empty stores.
I'm trying, yeah, I'm trying.
You know, I mean, just have the level property, I'm really happy that Kate Ripper's is coming together nicely. Penny Green's site's a mess, I mean, it's, it's.
Penny Green's site's up, we showed us the.
I know, I'm just saying.
Yes.
What problem? Penny Green.
It's sold.
Next to Brown's papers.
It's sold.
Yeah, they're working on it.
Working on it.
There's, there's a dumpster right in the back of it, we say it's a mess, you know?
And they closed?
Yeah.
I haven't grabbed a stone over there.
And I.
It's all sealed on.
And.
Can I go back to my first?
Sure, absolutely.
Uh, just making it clear, um, this goes back to the master plan review, this goes back to the town, uh, doing the formal. We do, this is now a digital tax map, that overlays the zoning on top of it. We failed to do a second reading, that's why it took a little longer, it got missed, but we got the second reading done. And so now, this is now been adopted, this is the new map, if you see the date on it, uh, you basically have an adoption of December of two thousand and fourteen, it's very tiny. But one thing I wanted to point out to this board, um, and I, I know we did the master plan review, was it now three years ago, or four years ago? Obviously, we're required by law to do a master plan review every so often, um, every seven years, but I, I think this board, I'm not saying we're going to start, we should do a master plan review again immediately, but there's a lot of deficiencies with even this current map. We have a tremendous amount of streets on here that do not exist, we have, uh, zones that are, uh, I think there's some improper zoning on here, and, and there's, I think, we have to look at this a little different. Even, even something as trivial as all the public, uh, quasi-public lands, I'd like to differentiate them a little better. If you look at them clearly, you'll see there's a tremendous amount of them. It doesn't necessarily mean they're all owned by the Borough. I think we're going to try and update that a little bit, a little bit better, but I, I. You know, we're required to do a master plan review every seven years, correct, John? Uh, you know, uh, I, I, you know, I think we might want to start looking into this even a little sooner, to clean some of these things up. There are things in here that, that it's, it's too hard for council to fix some of these problems, because these problems should be done here at the planning board level. And what I'm talking about are, are the zones. John, you look straight, am I saying something?
No, I think you can look at the zone properties before the master plan.
Oh, yeah.
Well, the only way to do that, from what we were, what I'm under the impression is, we have to send a letter out to everybody in that zone before we change it. Because when you do a master plan review, you're doing a public meetings, and you're having several public meetings, and there's hearings. And so everyone is basically, you know, I hate to say, it's, it's, you know, Borough beware, they should know that the planning board is doing a master plan review. When council does it, we have to go out to each, and it's almost like notifying every two hundred feet, we have to notify everybody in that zone saying, you may, we may be changing what can go on in your zone. And I don't believe that that is a council, something the council should be doing, I think that this board should be able to be looking at this. The only reason I'm driving this a little bit is because, you know, when I look at a map like this, it, it bothers me that it doesn't, it doesn't reflect exactly what's going on in this community. Well, yes.
I'm looking at the, the streets on the other side of the turnpike, they're all really dropped from the, from the Borough responsibility.
I'm not sure it updated, on the, like, this has to be updated on the master plan? This has to be, you know, vacated properly.
The master plan gets, did, did they get that finished?
No, the Waver Street's bothering me, and zones are bothering me.
But those, those are on the tax map, and, and those would have to be vacated.
And we can do that, so, and we start to do that. If you notice on the, on the map, great, currently here, we vacated the public walkways from Triton High School way out to, um, to Lindsay. We started, we vacated the extension on Detmar. You remember the Detmar, have a Waver Street, that Waver Street there?
From center.
And, and council can do that, and, but what I'm saying is, I, I'm fine with doing all this, I just, you know, it's, it's real nice when stuff comes from the planning board. And I think it, it, you know, I know we can start a council to start the planning board. Either, either by getting this work done, is all I'm saying, I would like to see is try to get as much of this stuff done. And then, of course, always looking at these, these, uh, these zones that we're looking at. I mean, if you look, we've got an R three zone out the middle of nowhere, we have two of them out the middle of nowhere.
I, I mentioned that before, I, it's like swap land, isn't it?
What's that?
It's like swap.
Well, one is the swap land, and, and one, I think, is, is Joe's sister's house. And I'm not quite sure she's going to put apartments there, um, and, and things like that, so, am I correct, is that your, um, do, can you see it? You know, I apologize, these are small, we do have larger copies.
Yes.
And we can even put a larger copy, or we're back on the, the website.
Do you have that online, too?
Yes, it'll be online to be able to zoom into it. Now, what it doesn't give you is, it doesn't give you, uh, property lot measurements yet. Now, the, the, uh, through the tax office, there's a, there's a digitized tax maps. So what we have to do is start integrating all these maps together, and we can layer all these different things.
Lots you could do.
Yes, lots and lots, if we layer all these things, this would be good for the police department, for all this kind of stuff, for this board, and even our public works department, code enforcement, to have all these things. So we're trying to really get in touch with these, these GIS systems, geographic information systems, and layer all this stuff. So this is the first step, but once again, it comes down to this board, and, you know, like you said, if you see something, we need to try to fix these things.
I think what we should do, what I, what I'd like to do, if I could get three volunteers, because, um, I think we should maybe have a little subcommittee that, that could meet on, meet on this, and this alone, and report back to the board. Um, because I don't, I don't think we're going to have an hour every meeting to spend on it. I think it would be much more productive if we could get three members, and Dennis, I think, would be probably very helpful because of what you do in your, in your business, and.
I volunteer to be one of them.
Two of them.
Help drive it.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying, if we get a subcommittee together, and then you guys report back to us, they'd be much more productive in that manner than for us to try to.
Chew, chew this around ten people. We can blow this up real big, we have an office upstairs, and we can work on it, so, and John, you're right, if we could just vacate some of these properties, then maybe we need to start vacating these. But even if you look at the property we were talking about on, on the, uh, people ready to bar, the trap rock property, there, there's a section right there that's, uh, I, I don't believe it's owned by the Borough, if you see that green line right there, I think it's owned by the county. And that's something else I think we need to do a better job to differentiate who owns what.
I, I don't have the, uh, map for me, but I can imagine what you're talking about, and I believe Conrad still owns that.
Some, some railroad, those folks still in, loving it.
That far down?
Yes, it does, it's still coming back through parts around me.
Well, we have to go look at that.
Yes, please, you want to have to drive up there, well, but there is railroad track.
David, would we be in violation of more than three people on something like this for sunshine laws?
Yeah, I, I would keep it three, yeah.
What's our, what's our quorum, is it five, or?
Um, yeah, but on sunshine, I think it could be four, it could actually be four. A quorum.
A quorum is four on this floor?
Seven.
But I think we're five for a quorum here.
Well, well, five to vote on it, on it, D.
I think five to vote.
Five to vote.
I think, listen, you're the, we're pending.
Yeah.
Council of farmers, there were people in council, and, and.
How many people are in camp? Five?
There are six members in council.
Six members, there's seven.
So we have committees of three.
I would do it if we were three, just to be safe. I mean, I'll look into it.
And then what?
If someone tells me four, we may be over.
Hi, Roland.
And we may be over.
Joe, Nick, and Dennis, and, uh, Dennis would like to be an alternate, I'm sorry, look at Craig, say Dennis. Uh, Craig also put his hand up, so, there's, he'll be, he'll be an alternate, so if one of you guys can't make it, please call Craig. As long as there's no more, it could be three different people, it just can't be more than three.
Yeah, 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 all together, but I'll, I'll look that up.
If you could respond to that.
Something's telling me four.
Let me, let me, if it's four, then.
I don't know if we can, I'll, I'll, I'll check.
Okay, because you're talking about the zones, because it's a joint board, the zoning might affect this?
And we're not a nine, we're a seven-member board, not a nine-member. So if something's telling me a majority on a seven-member board, would be four.
Even though I'm not a member of the zone?
Well, yeah, but you aren't, if, if, but we're a joint board.
I know.
So, I'm checking it out, but I'd rather be.
I'll let you go, Craig. I want to do it right, I just want to do it right, that's all. Okay. Any other?
Thank you.
Sure, sure, no problem. Anyone else have any new business to go over? All right, just pointing time, I'd like to open the meeting up to the public, anyone wishing to speak on any matter whatsoever, please come forward and, and be heard.
Say no one, we will point the public portion of the meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Mr. Dickinson, second by Mr. Pachowski, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. The only other communication I had, uh, was from, um, Mr. Knight, and we're, and we're doing this just to kind of try to keep people in the loop a little bit that might not otherwise be in the loop. What do we have wrong with Charlie's auto service?
Charlie's auto service as far as.
With the signs.
Putting the temporary reportable signs, which again, the borough ordinance was amended, but still calling for a permit to increase the amount of time up to six weeks within a calendar year, but still requires a permit, and also there's a time limit.
Okay.
They were, they were being put up without a permit. He was, uh, under the misunderstanding.
Where's Charlie's located?
Um, where's the personal log paper? Do you have a station? This is, this is.
Okay, I understand. And he also, uh, is occupying the form of a borough public work.
Right. He's not still running electric cords from building to building, I think.
Oh, my God. Well, that's useful, wealthy.
Yeah, but I know that it's allowed for temporary banners and temporary signs, but there's just limitations on it.
Yeah, they're, they're up to six weeks or any calendar year and a permit.
Because we didn't allow that at all, everybody remembers, so there was no, we're allowing.
Now, terms required, so, uh, Mr. Knight did, um, go out and issue an inspection report, um, in that effect, so I saw.
What signs is he putting up?
It's small portable plug in signs, you know, like the, uh, real type of signs.
Like state inspections, uh.
Advertiser type of services that are performed by his business.
Is he blocking the sidewalks, is he blocking the sidewalks?
No, the signs themselves are prohibited unless they're under a temporary permit.
So the, the, now, the complaint is now closed?
It's closed, the signs have been removed, I'm usually aware of the fact.
Very good, I appreciate, appreciate that very much.
What's the permit cost?
Twenty-five dollars.
The idea was mostly for, like, someone trying to create an open, you know, the permit, but, uh, our previous ones didn't allow it at all, you weren't allowed to put a banner up to, to do this. And so now, it's at least somewhat there, we're allowing some temporary type of promotional stuff. The problem is, you can't have stuff constantly out there, if you ever driven down the East Sham Road, I mean, the act of, you sell matches. Eventually, you know, you tear it, throw it down, and then the next week, you're back up again, and, uh, so this, you know, gives a little bit to kind of control that. It was a violation in the past, and it's still a violation, but you, at least you have a remedy to get a permit or get something temporary.
And you have control in that aspect, whereas there are specific times, as you know, the signs will be up and signed and down. And also, it's what they are putting in place, even temporary. We had an occasion where Restaurant, uh, Black Horse Plate put up a sign that was, uh, shall we say, not aesthetically pleasing, even though it was a temporary sign. So they're required to submit what they're putting up, even as a temporary measure, for approval. So you can't do it, you know, a piece of plywood would have, painted sign, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, and say, well, I got a permit for after thirty days, I don't think that's our desire to have something for true.
Yeah. Uh, we also had, uh, quite, quite a few occasions last year where a number of people came in for, uh, informal applications. And I think it was starting to become a problem, they would call up June, June would call me and say, oh, can we fit in so and so, can we do this, can we do that? We want to get away from that. The, the biggest reason why I want to get away from that is because we don't have any idea of what they're going to be asking us. Our professionals don't have any idea of what the informal applicant, what the information might be, uh, asking, and they may not have prepared for that particular informal application. What we'd like to put out there, for the members to see what, what your thought is, we, we had spoken about it, uh, last month, is a model fee for any informal application, some type of, you know, of a form that, like anything else, is given to all of us and the, and the solicitor and the engineer. So when they do come in, we at least have an idea of what they are asking us about. For instance, if someone comes in and would like to ask us if they can sell Christmas trees at a certain, uh, property, well, I'm going to make it my business to go out and visit that property before the meeting to make sure there's no site triangle problems, to make sure it's not going to be, uh, Campbell overflow on a neighbor's residence, things of that nature. I think we need to be advised of what these people are going to be asking us before it's asked. We, we, we deserve that courtesy, so we can at least be intelligently when they come in front of us. We can say, oh, yes, sir, we went out there, got a suitable parcel to sell your Christmas trees, or no, sir, I'm sorry, that property, um, uh, but residential properties is going to be a problem with cars, traffic, lighting, we can't do it. So, um, what is the process, Mr. Brown, as far as getting that started?
Why don't I give it, just do a suggested form and a timeline?
More play form?
Yeah, I mean, just to, and, and put it, a notice, though, that, you know, it's not a formal approval, it's not, you know, any, any way our, that we're actually testing, so all we can do is pick an idea of what we would be looking for.
And I wanted to state that they have to ask people on the agenda.
Well, we could, fourteen days, yeah, it has to be.
It's not going to be last minute, following up me or following up June or anybody else to say, oh, can I get in there, and I wouldn't want to do that.
And you should have some type of description of, uh, at least some kind of, and even if it's a drawing on hand.
I'm going to ask.
We're not required, they don't get an engineer, but, uh, but I can understand a lot of times it's a key for call, and people don't want to expect the money for engineering, it's very expensive to have that done and, and do it and get turned down.
I understand.
So, yeah, let me put something together for the next meeting.
Now, if, if they do require a variance, then they have to reapply again.
Yeah, yeah, this would just be an informal.
This would be a normal basis. Well, we'll talk about it.
Well, it should be a fee to at least cover, because I know we've had people come here, and we're sitting here asking John, if I make a decision, you can review it in your summer.
Well, we don't really make decisions, we just kind of bounce around ideas and, you know.
We sort of made, I mean, we've allowed people to come in here, we've let them kind of. Well, it made me to come back, I know you guys have done that both.
Well, if we decide that the variance isn't, isn't needed.
Well, why not be a variance, it might, it might be.
Interpretation.
Interpretation.
Yeah, I would, I, I would, is that, I, I was just thinking about that, if we, let me propose two things, like, for an informal discussion, which could be a fee, a fee base, but, you know, a certain thing that they have to possess. And then, for an interpretation, sometimes people will come in and, uh, instead of getting a use variance, well, and we've had that before.
But Jack, we had.
But we can do that, is that's not an informal, that's going to be an interpretation of the ordinance.
But you're still going to have to have time.
For that, yeah.
You're going to have to have time to review it, so you can keep.
Yeah, that's going to have to be a minimum of fourteen days, so.
Right.
You know, we could do an informal review.
And there's going to be money involved for you.
Yeah, or, and, or, and an interpretation, so there'd be two different things.
You can draft something off the coast of us. And then, now, would council have to pass this because we're cutting fees?
I guess.
I mean, all our fees are ordinance based, aren't they?
Yeah, we did, we would probably have to review it, approve it, and then I'd send a letter to council saying this, or the planning board is going to discuss, we would like this implemented. Two other designations on our, uh, fee schedule or whatever, to.
We're trying to do the walking.
You know, interpretation, ordinance, you know, informal presentation.
It's only change, you know, you have that the applications are, are submitted to the front office, we're going to pay.
But we don't have any designations on that app for, like, informal or for interpretation. So these would just be check, checkbook blocks.
And there's some other municipalities have used the word workshop.
Yeah, a lot of, yeah.
Formal workshops allowed. If they had, then workshops aren't usually the full board.
No, no, yeah, yeah, but then, they would have.
And then you have to go back anyway.
They, they have to be noticed, like, the actual meetings, because I look, I, I, I got all day to read today. Some people put in here that, you know, this is the last day you can submit the application. If you wanted an informal, this is what you have to do, and then we'll hear your case on this date.
A lot of towns require, like, if you have a major site plan application, you have to go in for a workshop with a subcommittee of the board before you go in front of the full board.
So I think, yeah, that's, that's, I will say the application is complete, you know, and that, or, you know, as hashed out, so you should be.
Okay, so you'll work up the up for a simple, then we'll kind of, uh, massage it next, next meeting, get everybody's opinion.
And I thought the keys, and I took, sometimes you can just make a decision, and if, they can always appeal your decision to come into the board.
Well, my, my suggestion, if you're, if you're, to, make it eight days. We don't have it before a certain date, we're not running.
Oh, yeah, no, I agree with that, right, yeah, fourteen days, yeah, has to be, uh, I mean, no more, uh, this board's been very impolite to residents to add one in the last.
It's just getting down to it, I'm not going to do it.
But, yeah, well, just have fourteen days, that's.
Two weeks is.
Yeah, and this is the fee, you know, we opened the slide, or council the slide, now a fee there is.
Dennis, what do you think of that, I mean, you deal with a lot of businesses, I mean, what's, what tends to happen?
No, I, I agree with you, I, I mean, I've been in front of the board a number of times in quarterly, and I think, unless June's going to correct me, I've given enough notice, and I try to, uh, give documentation, make sure, because a lot of people don't get out and see the site or whatever we're talking about. I agree, I, I think it should be a fee, that's why we're coming informally, to try not to pay anything, or, or to pay something minimum.
Right.
So, and, and it's the board's time that we're taking up, the solicitor, the engineer, so, I agree with you. Something where you can't make it three hundred dollars, in my opinion, but, you know, something that's worth, you know, we're, at least we're going to get, hey, we're trying to make things better, we're trying to help, you know, we're here to help the residents as well, I mean, follow the laws and ordinances, but on the same, on the same hand, we're, you know, we're trying to entice people to come into the town and change things.
And we can't give an opinion on something if we don't have any information coming in.
Well, that's, well, then the board shouldn't.
We have to have two weeks and have to have the information.
Nope, I agree a hundred percent.
So we can go out and look at the property, or look at the parcel, or, or like the case may be, or talk to our engineers, and talk to our solicitors and say, okay, what, what, what do we all think about this? Before we sit down at quarter or seven on Wednesday night, that's not the time to figure out what we're going to do. Okay, well, thank you, Dave, I'll, I'll put your, your plate. Is there anything else anyone would like to discuss this evening? Okay, now can a motion adjourned? Okay, Mr. awkwardly seconded by Mr. Dickinson, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Meeting adjourned at eight oh five, thank you.